Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 16th Board of Selectment Meeting. We're third order and pledge to believe here.
I was the leader to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the kingdom under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Open up a public hearing for the Child Care Center for the CDVG grant. Do you really want to give us an overview on that?
Sure, Mr. Chair. We were presented several months ago with the opportunity to help the child care folks apply for a CD Community Development Block Grant application for fifty thousand dollars essentially for tuition. Facility facilities moving along physically quite quite quickly. The roof is on if you haven't seen that. With us tonight are Ellen and Leanne who can give you more of an overview of the project required. This is a required public hearing as part of the application process.
Well, thanks a lot for holding this hearing for us. The Community Development Block Grant can only be offered if it's submitted through the town. So that's why we're going through this process. Many other grants can apply directly. So we appreciate the town's cooperation and assistance with this. We're applying and they said for tuition assistance fifty thousand dollars. And the reason for doing that is because all our financial modeling is based on something called Child Care Assistance Program, which is offered by the state. And those are benefits for all families who have, and it's a sliding scale of assistance based on your income, your family size. That that program has not been concluded, but it has run out of funds to continue to take new applicants. So with childcare, as you know, children grow quickly. They move in and out of childcare within a few years. So the waitlist is not very long. Everybody who applies now will go onto a waitlist. What we want to see is families who want and need, want childcare and need tuition assistance to be able to put their children into childcare without having to wait to move off of the waitlist. So by applying for tuition assistance, you know, development block grant, we hopefully can enable all families regardless of their socioeconomic status to receive the childcare that they want and deserve. We also have applied for other funds in addition to just this grant. And we've raised some other money through some private philanthropy to assist with tuition. So that is why we're going through this process. And again, thank you. Anything you want to add?
The building is coming off. We're still on target for end of September completion date. So that's really exciting. As Joe said, we have a roof and we have walls inside and we have insulation. We have water to the facility. And we have electricity now. So it's really beginning to come along well.
It'd be great when it's done for the town community. Sure. Thank you, guys. Anybody have any questions?
Hey ladies, thank you so much. As a taxpayer and someone who fully recognizes the importance of the early childhood services. I'm so excited to see this moving forward. But I did have a few questions and Jim, I don't know if you want me to direct it to you.
You could.
To pass through.
Yeah.
If it's not a true moment then.
Roll right on them. Yep.
And so it sounds like the goal of the municipality will be just a pass through. And we'll do all the paperwork, but. Will the funds be received and administered by the town of Rangelie or will they go directly to you folks?
They will go to the town.
Okay. And then we will build a town based upon the people that utilize those funds. So the financial implications for the town of Rangelie, are there any matching funds, in kind contributions or administrative costs that will be?
Probably writing a check. I mean, there would be that administrative cost.
Right, the cost of the town to through the funding for us. But it wouldn't be on a per child basis. So it would be multiple checks written unless that's how you would like to deal with it.
No, Mr. Chair, I envision a lump sum.
Okay, great. That's what we envisioned, but it's your money, so.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else? You got anything else you want to say?
Further in your meeting, I think it's under number seven. There's an action item for this. Will you authorize me if we're applying to do so to sign as the authorized official of the town, sign the application submitted to the Department of Opposite Community Development?
All right. Well, thank you, guys. That was painless. All right, we'll close this public hearing by past five. We're going to go right into a workshop with the Airport Commission, with the Airport Airport Commission Bylaws. Chairman here with us this evening. How are you doing tonight, sir?
My folks have been gone.
You have something you'd like to say? Feel free.
I'm. John spent a lot more time on it than the rest of the country. The only thing unusual, like you consider, consider anything, or change it all or throw it all away with it, is due to the lack of expertise in the region. I would forgive you if our thing allow a percentage of non-residents, by taxpayers on the. But it's only due to the lack of. Because I'm searching for the right word, expertise. That we ask that we could never have a sway board. It'd always be seventy thirty or ish sixty four. Because there is so much talent brought into our community that me, the local people, like myself, as we go away, that understand the language of the FAA. So that is besides terms and things you guys can decide. I know it's unusual that we would have a non-resident taxpayer on the board, but it's strictly because of a lack of ability of some of our local people that have not enough knowledge to understand the FAA's terminology, which even some of us as pilots don't understand the difference between the VR and. Yes, well, it's they talk in sign language. It's easy to get lost.
I believe it.
So if you take someone like you for her that's moved here, or you take someone in that category to create a huge asset. Yes, he's become a resident, but not all people have, right? That's I guess whatever.
Okay, well, thanks.
But employee shouldn't sway the board. Even if we have it. Brave with all that. Altitude, even a projected alternate shouldn't be able to sway that seventy thirty.
In one of the drafts, you had there, excuse me, they had alternate, an alternate that was a resident one that was a non-resident that way. And I'm missing.
Very soon, yeah. Find the expertise and get a lot of email.
Yep. All right. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. I was hoping some of the other guys would be here, but. Anyways, have anything you want to add?
I guess as far as looking over the new draft and the old one, I mean, do you have any preference or?
Well, what I was told, I guess I didn't make that meeting, but the guys were gonna abandon the thought concept of the work that we had done. Oh, okay. And I could have been misled.
No, the last meeting you guys held, you guys extended to abandon the work that had been.
Okay, okay.
Which, you know, we were coming out of ways and, you know.
The only thing I guess is important to avoid was considerable expertise.
Yep. And I think we are on agreement with that, you know.
And also context. That person could have huge context.
All right.
Negative on yourself, you can see.
All right. Thank you, Larry. We've got nothing else. We'll close the workshop then. It was easy. Two easy ones in a row. We'll get back into the regular meeting. Any conflicts of interest can be disclosed at the time that they come up. We've got Mr. Farmer, who I'm assuming is here for Craig, or is Craig coming too?
Craig's coming and we figured you had two hearings. We could, five fifteen was safe, but apparently it wasn't.
All right.
So. I apologize. I said, I think five fifteen was safe. So Mr. Marson was grabbing a quick ID.
Right, perfect. So we'll go down to public to speak on a non-agend item. Is there anybody? Nothing there. Go down to boards and committees. We've got some minutes from the ordinance committee and we have our minutes from our June second meeting.
Make motion to accept Board Selectmen regular minutes for June second.
Motion by Sam and a second by Jake. All in favor? Don't move. All right, down to consent items. We have an airport commission appointment of Mr. Larry Coob. That's for three years, I'm assuming. Joe didn't say on there, but.
Yes, I believe so.
Make a motion to appoint Larry Coob for the Airport Commission?
Second. Motion by Sam, second by Jake. Mr. Beauregard.
Yes. I'm for God, for anything precedent. This has been extended process this.
It has.
I fully expect that, you know, people have lost track of some of the portions that had taken place over last year. I would like to just like to point out that this past year, Donnie, Nodoff, and I, both long-term members of the Airport Commission, our terms were getting ready towards fire. And we filled out the appointment papers so that we could get reappointed and they didn't get acted on. And I asked Joe if he thought he could recommend that the existing members be reappointed so that there'd be more of a commission with more background knowledge of the process. And he informed me that he didn't want to bring that in front of you folks because you would made it clear that you didn't want to do any appointments until you were solid as Airport Commission Bylaw. So that being said, it seems to me that Donnie and I and Larry should all be treated the same and all three of us should get reappointed or none of us. That just seems like that would be the fairest way to proceed. And I just wanted to refresh your memory on how that played out over the last. So I wanted to bring that up. Willing to discuss it with you folks and see what you think.
Thank you. Anybody have any consent?
That is right. I mean, it's kind of, we've had to push people aside just because we haven't decided on.
That's why I told you when I made my nomination. Because you haven't elected the bylaws yet. Those numbers will all change. It all could expect you aren't got fully established. I expected to be in the running with other candidates. But I believe from a tip, because I ran out in first, we wouldn't have had a quorum for this month's meeting until the bylaws are selected. So when I put me in for sixty days until you guys review that, that's also, I just don't want to not have a quorum on the airport. While we have the bylaws being reviewed.
One of my thoughts that there's all.
Well, I'd jump ahead of our hope, Don.
Yep.
I'm gonna step aside, except we were trying to keep the board intact while we acted on the bylaws.
Mark?
Yeah. If I think if Donnie and I had been reappointed, you'd have had six people on the Airport Commission. And Donnie and I both decades of experience on how both of us have served, have served on almost every board mission in the town. Have a proven track record of critical thinking, you know, when it helped the town over the last thirty years resolve some sticky issues and just be dismissed, you know, seems odd to that. And, you know, like I said, I think to be equitable, we all arbitrarily, the same, the three members that have been on the Airport Commission had asked for reappointment. If you want to reappoint anyone, we should all be reappointed. And if not, we should all be left out.
All right. So this is getting old and I'm sick of hearing about it. Not any disrespect to anybody in here. I'm sick of dealing with it and it needs to be dealt with. How soon can we call a vote to these bylaws? My opinion, the selectmen need to make a decision. We've heard everything that the Airport Commission has to say. We've had a long budget, budget season and vote. When can we call this to a vote? We can call it today if you want. Later on, we can take it up on any business, I believe. What's going on? So in my opinion, we halt nominations until this is voted on, but I think we need to vote on it forthwith. That's my feeling upon.
You understand what I'm saying? We didn't want to be pointless.
Well, no, I understand, but I want to set a rules for you to work by and I want to be able to appoint people when they put their appointments up and not wonder if I can, if I should, or when I will. So if we can get these rules set in place, then we can continue business the way we used to or the way, you know, a little bit smoother anyways. Do you think you got anything?
Nothing.
Correct. Jake or Sam, anything?
I agree. Thank you. Good job.
Do you want to install the location right now?
Yes, sorry. I will resend my nomination appointment.
In a second. Second. Somebody, I'll rescind. All right. So we will, under new business, we'll bring up those bylaws, hammer them out, get them done, and then we'll have some appointments at our next meeting then. All right. Thank you, Larry. All right, we've got a couple of liquor licenses.
Make a motion to approve liquor license for originally Valley Inc. Rangelie and.
Second. Motion for Sam and a second by Jake. Any other discussion? All in favor? Don't move.
Make a motion to approve the liquor license for Razik Resto Corp. Portage Tap House.
Second. Motion for Sam, second by Ethan. Any other discussion? All in favor? Don't move.
Make a motion to approve the event permit for the street dance of Rangelie Friends of the Arts on July sixteenth at six thirty PM to ten thirty PM.
Second. Motion for Sam and a second by Jake. Any discussing? All in favor?
I have one question. Hold on. When I was reading. Jimmy, did you hear me?
I can. Go right ahead, sir.
Hey, my question on that event permit was I didn't see any signatures from the police chief, fire chief. I'm assuming they probably approve it, but it wasn't, wasn't signed off, I don't believe.
Rich is with us tonight and he said that they signed off afterwards on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Yep. We're gonna take a pause for a second, jump back up. Mr. Sargent, who joined us, so. Now right to you, sir.
Well, sir. Sure. Real short. Hi. So we're obviously looking at the town cove. And the item in white is where the fireworks are normally set off. What we're doing this year is we are expanding the shoot so that a large portion still be sent off from the town park. But we have rented four barges and we've just been with him for an extended period of time. We told him to be here five twenty, five twenty-five, not knowing. So any questions? He's here? Good, good. So in any event, you'll address any questions you want on safety, game warden, inland fisheries, wildlife, FAA, all of those things. This is the expert, the philosophy, the permanence for that. So while Chris is letting him in, we'll go to the second slide if we could. And here, now I can show my house. We are going to take the barges and one will be out here. One will be over towards the island. One will basically be in front of the island. And the fourth one will make a determination on this August when we go out and vote to lay it out. Steve Marson is in the house. I see it. We just have all been meaning to make certain that when you're in the town cove, that the people over by the town and lake, so to speak, can see, obviously, they see everything that happens in the cove. They will obviously see the one that is directed towards the east shore, the one that is directed towards the east and the south shore. They will see marginally, if they're all the way over in the cove at the town and lake, they will marginally see, you know, the high level stuff in front of the island. And then whatever we have to the right, which is to say the west of the island towards Fall Mountain. That will be affecting again, everybody on east shore plus all the way down at the west shore of Placid. So it is meant to be tremendously inclusive. This is a five minute presentation, so I'm wrapping up, but we only had eleven days before I left for wherever I was going. But it was out west of Europe the last time that I saw you. So that's why I wanted to come back. So I've done eleven days of fundraising, if you will. I do not want to be a fundraiser chief except for this. And one other thing I will do, a snowball phone, not. So what we're doing is trying to raise a hundred and four thousand dollars. And we've raised thirty-four thousand five hundred in those eleven days last fall. I just have to spend twenty hours a week for nine of the next twelve weeks, starting on June twenty-third, raising the other seventy thousand bucks. So we're thirty-four five into a hundred and four. And we will get it done. So I'm here tonight to say to Steve, because all this stuff has to be planned out when he buys all these fireworks in the Chinese or whoever buys it from in the fall, he needs to know where our number is. So we're going to talk to him about a drop dead date because our next meeting with you will be December fifteenth. That one's going to be more comprehensive. That's the third Monday. We just put down six PM if it's any different, but Chris now, so that I can be here. And wrapping up, you can see there it's looking right into the island. This is also going to see whatever happens out here. But the people from the town lake area, they will have three of those barges to see as well as the one in the cove. So it's going to be spectacular. Before you go to Steve, is there anything of mine? Because my job starts a week from today.
That's the big, sixteen.
So the big thank you for taking us on. And so Steve, we're guaranteeing seventy-five thousand is the minimum shoot. So whatever I don't raise, I will make sure that we put in enough to get this to a seventy-five thousand dollar shoot, which is four point five times anything that has been shot on here. Yes, Larry.
So this is the Fourth of July of year of today.
It's a year from today on the third of July.
If there was any potential, this is going to be the show. Whatever would typically locally go into it, could it also go into it?
It already is.
It is.
Oh, it did? Okay.
I didn't hear that. He was wondering about the, is the town still going to pony up their share?
Oh, yes, the town has increased their share of thirteen thousand dollars.
Right.
And that's part of your thirty.
Yes, and then don't worry, your phone's not going to ring for two more weeks.
I have no way to find you, Larry.
Yes. Derek, any questions you'd like to Steve? Is there anything that you wanted to present?
Like you say, the only thing that's, which will become a question, we get closer and closer, is about the assistance that we'll need out in the water to keep the shoot site clear of boats. I mean, while they're setting up during the day, you're allowed to be within a hundred feet of it. And that happens all the time. It's not like they're stopping, getting on the badge with us, but they, we just keep moving along, we gotta keep moving along. But when it comes to shoot time, when the guys are firing, because the antennas are do all these at the same time. So all four displays will be going off at the same time. So we have to be focused on firing, not patrolling the water, looking out there in the water. Other than that, when we do come to bring all the fireworks, like we'll come up in, stage all the floats a couple of days before. They'll be sitting out there anchored. They'll have lights on them and they'll have equipment on them. The only thing that we would ask at that point is that if you're gonna have a person here or fight them, they just go and check and make sure nobody's throwing stuff, you know, overboard or so. I mean, we'll secure it, chain it down that, but, you know.
One of the, one of the things that we discussed when you left at ten oh five was we discussed that we're going to request a meeting with the inland fisheries and wildlife. He takes care of all the permitting. Make no mistake about that. What we wanted to do is see if we could have one of the IFW people at each of the four boat sites. I'm going to see if we can get fifteen or twenty friends that have boats so that we could do hot moons, if you will, around each of those four sites. And if they say back two hundred feet, they say back two hundred and fifty feet, whatever he says is what we're going to do. Same thing for cleanup the next day, which we'll update you on December, okay? But so that is something I neglected to say to you is that we're going to help with how many of the boats within reason that we need to keep that safe.
Yep, okay. Basically, just so you understand about fireworks, for every one inch diameter, like the top of that bottle cap is one inch, I need seventy feet all the way around it. So that now becomes a hundred and forty feet across. We'll be firing six hundred, six inch shells out there. And so that now success becomes eight hundred and forty feet at each shoot site. You know, circumference, circumference, you know, because the main, the main thing about the show is, you know, in town, you're only allowed to fire with a nosegate four inch shells that we fire normally. And when we're out there, we're able to fire the bigger shells. So I mean, my whole point will be firing the biggest shells in the water. Then when we get to the finale, doing the finale with, with three inch or four inch shell versus the two inch, two and a half like we do in town here with three inch. So it's about just coordinating, making sure we have the areas protected so that people don't get into it once we get fired. And that's really, that's right. As far as the permitting process, this is going to become reality. I meet with the, I meet with the state fire marshal this coming Friday. And that's one of the topics we'll be discussing for, you know. Next year is going to be a big year in the state of Maine. And New Year's Eve, we only, we usually do twelve, thirteen shows at New Year's Eve. We're probably, today we're at seventeen. There's not even New Year's Day, not even close with it, but people are secure on their dates. So I would suspect next year, and even the thing for Fourth of July, we're doing forty-seven shows this year in six states. And I know he wants badges. So I told him, I said, you know, you need to make a commitment because I only have so many badges. And I told him about our first meeting. I went back to the office of guys to see if you're formal for Rangelie for July third for, you know, next year. And so that we make sure that we have enough equipment to take care of where we're going to go. But it's a process that I'll be in contact with you, your fire department, your, your local police department and that. Even if it gets closer to the day, you know, when we bring in all the fireworks, you know, we'll have to have people back a hundred feet at the waterfront while we're loading stuff onto vessels to get out to each shoot site so we can stash that. So statistically, it's really pretty easy doing this. I've been doing fireworks, yeah, forty, fifty, yeah. Next July.
And then you all remember that we have cancellation date, brand or win date or whatever of the fifth, not the fourth. He has too many shoots going up.
Sure.
So everybody will know that months and months in advance. Okay. Anything else for Steve? Questions, Keith?
Not at the moment.
So we will do education materials out about the distancing and all that as well.
People are very, people are very respectful of it. I mean, the main thing is people will know about what the distances have, the. People are very, people are very respectful of it, I mean, the main thing is people will know about what the distances have, that they can stay back. That's, it's all about education and and, you know, as we get closer and closer, you know, you could. You can put a couple posters out in the waterfront so people see and understand it. At the little boat launch areas, that rented boats out, just so that people understand it. It's uh, and people are very good.
Yeah.
You see, you see one police boat out there with their lights on, or the fire department with their lights on. People don't even come around, they stay, all it takes is, all it takes is one boat out there, they know. Don't even, don't even walk there.
For, for one reason, they stay away.
Yeah. So anyway, so I don't see it being a problem.
So I'm only here after September second, I'm here for six days. Uh, the last three of September and the first three of October. So I'll see you on September fifteenth, uh, December fifteen, but you call me anytime. Any one of the three of us, yes.
Um, how long will the barges be in the water?
So what we, what we'll probably do is we'll bring them up on July second. And we probably won't get them until July sixth. So that'd be the. So the thing is that, but even once they're out there, people can go right, you, you don't, you don't have to stay away from it, once, once we do the shoot. You go right up, and what we may attempt to do, because we do first light inspection that morning, they may bring all those badges in and just tie them off by your place.
Yeah.
And then we're there, it'll all be out, they'll be in the shoreline, not out there, so. We have to do a first light in the morning, we take a ride around the lake, you know, just looking for any debris here and there. The other thing I will tell you is my company thing I use in fireworks is made out of paper. There's no plastics, none of that stuff, it's all paper. It's all biodegradable. We actually do a lot of shows in Casco. And one of the concerns that came up down there was about. The debris on the bottom of the, of the pond, Lake Quarter Fifty Five. And so we've had divers go down and basically it takes about fourteen months for it to just be all gone. So if anybody asks a question, just, it's paper. It is, yeah, and then when I say paper, the six inch shells have the thick casings. That's what takes the longest path. If you're firing two and a half, three, four inch shells, they're gone in six months, it's just, all it is is paper glued together that holds the status.
I guess my concern with also would be safety, I mean, with people after the fact, after the fireworks, everything, people uh exploring. The barges, um, I don't know how you.
We went home until the next morning. We wouldn't, we wouldn't take anything off during the night and bring it to land, it'd be during daylight, early inspection that. Then we would staff with the badges so that we can see what we're doing.
Right.
Is what you're saying is on the third, the fourth and the fifth, he picks them up on the six. Does it have something on the outside of the boat so that people just wouldn't run right into it?
Well, yeah, we got, we got them, they're all, they're all, we have lights on all, there's, there's strobe lights on all.
They all light it up and all that stuff.
They're gonna be curious, they're gonna wanna go hit on this.
You know what you do.
They have lights on them all the time, they, they stay on.
You know, late night, people diving off of them, I mean, uh.
Remember all, Jason, right from my dock. You know, in other words, my boat, my dock are right there, so all four, we, we are making certain that we can see them at all times.
We put farmer on the shoreline in a ghillie suit.
Are we good?
Sorry, I just had a really quick question. I heard people who did foots are coming from around the bar, but I don't think I heard what size the barges are.
We'll have twenty four foot badges and, and we have one thirty foot badge. So we'll be bringing three twenty fours in the third.
But do you have any other questions? No, no, all set?
Thank you very much.
Very much.
Now just give a, I'll leave my. No matter what, I just. Just by all means, send me, send me an email, give me a call.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam, you were on fire, so.
Oh.
Same as far.
Yeah.
Not yet, art, uh, make motion to approve the event permit for the sidewalk chalk art contest. For the Rangeley Public Library Pending Certificate of Liability on August, August twenty second at ten A M to four P M.
Second motion from Sam, second by Jake, any discussion?
This is the first time?
They used to do that years ago.
It's curious, don't feel like I've seen it before.
All in favor? Alright, so moved.
Alright, we've got the uh. Uh, I got a motion, the town manager to authorize him to sign and submit the childcare center C V D G grant application.
Douglas, thinking from Sam, second by Ethan, any other discussion? All in favor? No move, thank you again, ladies.
Let's see, we've got the Haley Pond Park banner, do we, what do we here? We just um.
Pat showed us these drawings for the banner at the park, commission meeting there. And I guess he's gonna be doing some work on.
The picture.
Changing that graphic of some, somewhat, and then you were saying that he's looking into that metal sign.
Correct, yeah, from the, at your last meeting, you talked about access to Haley Pond Park, so the access point. Control by a standardized red and white sign that we can order off the shelf essentially. Uh, what I was seeking for approval from the board on is, is this rendering, uh, is taken from. The actual existing Haley Pond Park banner that's in the car. Like to have your approval, put something like this. At Main Street, so that would direct folks from Main Street.
Okay.
There'd be an arrow on either side.
And could that be pending the graphic change on that? Honestly, yeah, he was gonna reach out to that artist that he's.
There's a P, it's a sixty five dollar fee for them actually generated. We wanted to have a, uh, an idea that this is what you were looking for before we pulled the trigger on that. So if, if this is adjusted per the park commission's recommendations that the board is okay with. This design, Keith?
Uh, the directional arrow is not depicted in this example of the banner, does that become a separate? Piece of signage or is that gonna be? Uh, designed into that?
Our intent, Mr. Chair, is to have it drawn in on, on the bottom of both sides of the side.
Make a motion to approve the Haley Pond Park banner, ending a different picture.
Second motion from Sam, a second by Ethan, any other discussion? All in favor? So. Yeah. We already do it?
Yep.
We're in second here.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, uh, the baseball field sign, uh.
Mr. Chair, there's a, uh, in your packets, it approved by the planning board package, uh, for the scoreboard out back. What's under it, uh, the sign here has the names of some businesses. And individuals who uh help sponsor and uh erect uh the scoreboard. Sign up, I just wanted to bring that to your attention so you could thank them and also so that you could approve. Now these private names being displayed on, on the property out back.
I apologize, we didn't realize that was part of the process, we just submitted it a couple of months ago.
What's good?
Make a motion to authorize the sign to be installed under the scoreboard and to allow the names of these businesses to be displayed at the field.
Second, I want to say from Sam, a second by Ethan, Keith?
Uh, I personally want to thank everyone involved with that, uh, that scoreboard and, and the work involved. It looks fantastic, long time coming, thank you. I have a question in regards to that, or maybe recommendation is, I know there was, I'm not familiar with, but. I do believe that the builder supply was involved with the dugouts. So is there signage for that? To, you know, obviously to, to help support, that they supported the rec program, plus we show that. That um commitment, and my other suggestion would be. In the future, can we have the sponsorships and or um. Other banners for uh affiliated with that field?
Do you know if there's any?
Uh, so the sign, Mr. Chair, it, as presented here, is finished, it's actually in the building, being ready to put up. Um, I certainly think that uh for other folks who have sponsored dugouts, some things, I'm sure that you would. Consider allowing those to be placed on the dugouts or under the sign. Someplace out there.
Yeah, definitely.
We could work that up if you'd like and bring it back to you.
And I definitely, I definitely didn't want, I didn't mean to include those individuals on the presented sign or finished sign. I just think an additional signage may be uh warranted.
Yeah, but I agree, sign on the dugouts, sign on the truck wagon, that was somebody else, can't remember who did that one, on the, the concession building. Can't remember who that was.
All set, Keith?
Yes.
Um, so yeah, you can look into that, Joe, just get back. Alright, uh, we get a motion, we get a motion in a second, all in favor? Alright, so move. Overlay, over, over limit permit from the state. Want to fill us in on that, Joe?
I'll give you a quick update, it's a kind of a formality. That the D O T does when they come to town to do the project, uh, they want us to be aware, A, that they're coming to do this project, B. Uh, their contractors, uh, they'd like to, if necessary, run over limit overweight trucks on, on our road. The only over, the only posted road that I'm aware of in the vicinity of this project is. Not hosted for waves, just both to know. It's gonna be a short duration, I would recommend signing uh this permit that has spots for the board to sign it. Included in that, uh, is a waiver or bond application. So I wouldn't worry about that tonight, if, if the contractor says, comes to me and says, you know, I got a really heavy. Truck come on such and such day, if you require a bond, I'll work on it, but work with them on that at that point. For now, if you just wanna. This is for ADA curb work on Main Street, Pleasant Street, some other downtown streets that, uh. Actually, it's just those two, the D O T, Doc Rose, Main Street and Pleasant.
Make, make a motion to approve and sign the permit for the ADA curb grant improvements. And the, or the over limit permit.
Second, motion for Sam, second by Jake, any other discussion? All in favor? Oh, move. Right down the whole business, wanna give us an update on the R C D diamond truck?
Sure, um, potentially in the twenty twenty five trucks that old some things took in. Uh, those bids have effectively expired, they can't get their bids in for twenty point fives anymore, they won't explain it to me, it's a corporate. Uh, G M forward issue, uh, the last meeting the board had. Asked for information about the D O T spec truck that O'Connor has to stick it over. D O T, D O T did not take this one, it was color, the color was white. And the, the local patient that wanted it didn't, wanted a white truck, wanted blue, so this is kind of leftover. Pictures of it in your pack, um, that's what it looks like. And pricing is also included, including in email, uh. With the trade in allowance kind of figured in, so the trade allowance is, has to be the same package, it's five thousand. Um, the total price of the truck, including that, would uh bring the balance to sixty thousand, two fifty. I just wanted to bring that to your information. I, we have time to put this back out to bid. But I'm happy to do that.
We thought we could get more for that truck sold ourselves, right, or we would, and it said it was worth.
I think we could, yeah, I, I, I was, I wanted to come back to you and talk to you about it, I don't know, I think before you left. If I could get ball five and trade in, then.
Yep.
That's what you were looking for, and if not, we would, uh, I think eighteen thousand was the number if you wanted to list that for sale. So, anybody who got anything?
Keith, you were vocal on that before, did you have any input you wanna get on that?
Uh, so, Joe, first, thanks for supplying that information. Um, I definitely think that five thousand dollar number is unrealistic and what we should accept. Um, did you mention last time what the turnaround was on a twenty six, if they pursue, if we go that way? Or when we go that way, I guess at this point?
I, I hear you. I am not aware of what the turnaround is, uh, I tried to get that, um, in my phone conversations in the last week, so. They don't know yet, you, um, so I, I don't know when they would be available.
It's usually, Keith, correct me if I'm wrong, or Larry or anybody that remembers, it's usually not until October that you can get. October or November, I think, right? Yeah, so it won't be till the fall.
Still buying twenty five today. You still purchasing twenty five today or twenty six as well?
You, you can't, according to these guys, they're saying you can't even get twenty fives now, they're pushing to the twenty six store.
And get them, but. Yeah, should be October for the twenty six.
Correct, yeah.
Buy one today, probably.
Right.
They're not building it.
Correct, right, yeah.
And they, I don't know what size truck.
That's the thing, I don't know if they can find one that. I know, I'm just regular.
It's a three quarter ton pickup, one five hundred. Yeah.
Four truck sixty three.
Hmm, that's with the plow, that's out, that's out the door, plow discounts, et cetera.
I think they got a wet talk here today.
Uh, not, not far off, we're prepared for a few plows.
Two thousand six I bought. Five hundred, that was forty one grand.
So we want to list that truck then on, what is it?
Municipal, once, rule of court. Once we do that, we can also uh post it locally too.
Yeah, let's, let's do all of it. Yeah, let's do that and we'll revisit, we'll find out when, when they think things would be available. No, I don't think so, well, do you want a motion to put it on municipal?
Yeah.
Some of.
Second. Second by Ethan, all in favor? Alright, so move.
Uh, neural business, you wanna bring up bylaws here, considering we've given them one reading already, this would kind of be the second reading now. And a dog. Right?
I don't have one. Well, you are in the big chairs.
Well, yeah.
Biggest thing that we, uh, at one point, one of our meetings, with the membership thing, is scratched out about the alternates. But in the next meeting after that, Sam and I had talked to Jim. He thought about putting those back in, because it made sense so they can have a quorum.
Make sure, yeah, the extras.
That way you have one of each. Uh, so you're not swaying the, uh, the makeup of the board. Maybe, uh, if I'm not mistaken, I don't know if you got yours right there, Joe, I think that was the only other thing.
Although I wonder if even if the alternates were just still, you had your two, up to two on the board, and then you still said. Normal or residents, voters. Not doing one on one, making it confusing on who can be in the, I don't know.
What do you, um?
Sorry about the, the two alt, the two alternates, just, just being. I don't know that you wanna confuse it so much that you're one and one all the time, and then who could be, who could fill in as the alternate or not, I mean.
As far as like non-resident.
I don't think it, I don't think it needs to be a must, I think it can be, is that like a. Guide.
Either.
Or, right, but it doesn't have to be one, right, is there, I don't know, is that in the.
Well, you'd need to make sure you'd have, if you had two, they'd have to, two residents. Because if you put a non-resident filling in uh for residency, the way that, you'd sway the majority of the board the other way, which is what Larry was talking about. The makeup of the board.
I mean, I just don't see, there shouldn't be any sway. Uh, that to me is just concerning, but we're all on the same team, so, uh, I would just.
Nope.
I just had a really quick question, I'm so sorry, so I appreciate the time and effort that's gone into this, because I know how long this has all been drawn out. But which version are we working on right now? Because there were two different versions that were posted with the agenda, and I don't believe that either one of those are the most accurate and up to date with the information that's been changed.
I'm looking at one that says amended March thirty first, twenty twenty five, but it's crossed out. And Stephen has changed the, the name spelling on the front too, that's.
Well, and. Throughout several of them, I'm like. Some of them say, like the very top, but this one says it's now originally Stephen A. being municipal airport, and then throughout the document, the word municipal has been dropped, which I feel is a very important piece, needs to go back in there. So depending on which version you were working on, some of my comments may not make any sense.
Yeah.
Because if you're working on a version that says Stephen A. municipal being, I'm Stephen A. Being municipal airport, then I'm working on a totally wrong version.
Gotcha, Mark?
Hey. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the most recent one that I could find in my paperwork, uh, on page three, section B, we have a pavement of a tire and seat. The way that's written, I think, uh, that's not how I understood the vote that you folks made. I think you ended up concluding that all reappointments would be by the board of select.
Yes, that's true.
You know, and this doesn't really read that way, that, um, in the version I have, if I have the correct version. And I can read what I have, and you can tell me if it's the right one or not.
Is yours in red on that?
Yes, mine is in red.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, it's almost like they can, the commission can re-approve themselves unexisted member for a three-year term. And I think you folks concluded that they should be treated like all the other boards of the commission.
Come back through the board, yeah.
Application process, give it to the board of selectmen, you folks decide. I think that was the vote that you took.
I believe you are correct.
I think Sam made the motion.
Yep. What do you got for the job for?
I know.
So he was in the months in the packet from, uh, ended May nineteenth this year. That would happen most recent, as far as I'm aware. That's in there, also in there.
And that's one that's missing municipal throughout. Wanted to throw that out there.
So where is the May nineteenth date on it?
First penny bottom, right.
Well, right, that's the one that was in the packet itself. I came home.
Yeah, I don't have it.
There's that one, I think, that is the original.
What's up, Joe?
There's one membership here, five members who all involved here, those three residents and up to two non-resident taxpayers of the town is nominated by the standing commission and appointed to stagger three-year terms by the board of select. Full expiration of a member's term, that term.
Yeah.
What if? The old ones.
We're not dealable.
Here, it's, it's pretty much laid out. We just want to change the membership. Can't we just insert on the old one? Everything's great with the purpose intentions of the the old one. If we adopt updating the membership to, it already says there are seven, actually it says seven members with two alternates, up to two alternates. Um, but if we, you know, put in the edit or the.
It sounds like the biggest thing.
Biggest is the five-member two alter, I mean.
Getting rid of the reinstatement altogether. You know, reinstated, you, you're up for appointment.
But adopting these old airport laws, just updating the membership is, was really only our issue to begin with, correct?
That, that was.
Correct. So we've already kind of come to an agreement of how we like to see the new membership being laid out. And couldn't we, instead of, and is everything kind of, I don't, we were asked if it, is the old bylaws kind of pretty up to date with, you know, the Range Municipal Airport? We just don't have Stephen Bean in there. We need to update that. Stephen A. Bean, I'm just guessing. And then, and then, and instead of, uh, assist the town manager, would there be an airport manager instead? Airport slash town manager, whether whoever it is wanted to. How are we feeling? Good? Looking good?
It's a good roll.
Um, can I motion to adopt some of those things?
Do it.
That motion to adopt the about the old bylaws of the Range Municipal, Stephen A. Bean Airport Commission bylaws, updating the membership to our new format as being. Do you want me to read it or, uh, will it make sense?
Yeah.
Intentions, membership, boom. Okay. With updating the five-member, two-alternate volunteer commission composed of at least three residents, up to two non-resident taxpayers of the town of Rangelay is nominated to be at the standing commission and appointed to a staggered three-year terms by the board of selectmen. Upon expiration of a member's term, this term can be renewed for additional three years contingency upon a major, majority, no, we don't like that.
We'll cross them.
We're crossing that part, sorry. Take that back. Um.
So on expiration of a member's term, that term can be renewed by applying to the board of select.
And I think, is there anything else that we needed?
Well, you have to get rid of A, right? After that.
That's, yeah, we're not even, I think we're just wanted the membership. Two alternates.
Right, so you want to.
I feel good as it's laid out, right? Everybody else with me on that?
So you're going to throw out the A? And what you do for it?
Yeah. No resignation. Yeah.
This is what we're.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Crossing out A, removing that, replacing that with. Sorry, Tracy. And everything else, I mean, uh, in this, I feel like the vacancies is good on the old, right? I mean, everything. Anything else need to be updated? That I'm not aware of. I think that was all we needed to do was the members.
Would you like to update the name of the airport too?
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
Biggest thing you want to make sure is you don't have a conflict within the government.
And I don't think there is a conflict with the old, something other than it's good.
Well, if we send this forward, it'll be pending legal correct.
Right.
They will. Right, and they can tell us if we, if we've missed something.
All right. Blank these.
Nice motion.
Second, second by Jake. You got anything, Keith, you want to add?
No, sir.
All right.
Feel good?
And you have a little?
Nope.
All in favor? All right, so moved. Then Joe, can we get all of those applications that we had submitted last year?
Extend my thirty days to use, we can have a quorum.
For the next meeting, did you guys meet at the end of the month? Yeah, yeah.
Make a motion to extend Larry Coop's, uh, term for thirty days.
Second. Second by Sam and a second by Jake, all in favor? All right, so moved.
All right. And I, new business, sewer department capital purchases siding that building.
So this is a project here that, uh, we put out the RFE a month ago, a month and a half ago. Did not get any responses, uh, to presiding with those stores, sewer plant. Um, I talked to the guys at the plant, saw, you know, anybody locally busy. We all know, well, all the company I know that's been, those metal siding, it's one of their specialties, they're a great big outfit. Uh, I have them to update a look, give us a quote. They did come and take a look, but I haven't seen the quote yet. And added today, would have brought it back in with me. Uh, so this is a fun project that we just weren't able to get, uh, this, uh, this fiscal year. Uh, there is fifty thousand dollars put aside for it, uh, because I don't have uh, a quote or a contractor to do it. I'm not comfortable asking you to carry it forward. Unless you carry it forward, it will lapse. It'll take it up at later days when we have contractor lineup.
Any, any chance of hearing something you think this week or?
I haven't, I didn't hear anything. I specifically reached out today and asked for it. It's today or Thursday. It's, you know, there's deadline. I've gotten, I haven't heard anything. I don't have that, so. Uh, it is something we're going to need to do, uh, to take care of that building. Uh, but until I have, you know, uh, somebody that can do it for us.
Technically, you get to till the end of the month, so. Before that gets thrown into reserve, so.
It's a, it's a fine balance, right?
Yeah. So fingers crossed, maybe something pop up.
Yeah.
All right.
Hey, Jimmy.
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure I was part of the original conversation, but is there a reason why they're going metal and not with another material for siding?
Uh, I know why we're not going with vinyl siding. I'm sure you see that. It's, it's, uh, bitted and the paint's been blown off, and there's also cracks in it, gets really cold and break it. So the idea with steel or metal siding, mostly you won't have that effect with, with that. It won't break. Things balling around in the wind or ice, uh, picked up by the wind won't break the, uh, steel like it will vinyl.
Was it going to be, uh, corrugated metal? Is that?
Yeah, vertical.
Yeah.
Schemes.
Yeah.
Well, it almost looks like roofing.
Yeah.
Or designed to be sided.
Keith? All right, so, uh, I guess, I mean, there's obviously multiple oper, or other materials, LP smart siding, modern vinyl, I'm not, not saying is the way to go, but there's a lot more uh, textures, you know, uh, cedar shakes, board and batten, um. One concern I have with if you go metal, and then maybe I'm overthinking this, but is if you get any kind of damage up there, you can't, like, you're pulling a whole panel off, not just taking a small section out. I mean, you, you have more. And then there's more, I'm going to say there's more work into replacing a panel or, or damage, in my opinion. And then secondly, if vinyl susceptible to the same atmospheric or environmental conditions up there, you're still going to have the metal siding that's going to be conditioned through severe winds with the dust and, you know, snow, ice, all that stuff. So are those things that were thought about in this pursuance?
Yes, those are things that, when I met with the folks at the plant, we talked about it. Those are things that we talked about. Metal was the preference that was, was recommended. We definitely did want to put vinyl back on.
I mean, I would recommend vinyl. I just think you have a lot more options. And with those options, you have a lot more contractors that are probably able or could schedule something besides a specialty product.
Yeah, we'll be able to cast a broader net, uh, in the next year. I guess the takeaway tonight is being halfway through June, it's unlikely that we're going to be able to get this project done. It's going to be next possible. Well, that's, that's the message I wanted to get there. And I, I do appreciate the, uh, the fresh insight on that. Maybe there's a, a chance for us to regroup on it. Let's see, see if there's a different way to approach it going forward.
So Keith?
All set, thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Joe. Oh, sorry.
So sorry.
No, you're fine.
Just a quick question. How long has the vinyl setting been on the structure?
I'm going to say it's original.
So, uh, original since the plant's been put there?
I believe so.
Okay.
Correct.
All right, yeah. Larry?
I think what you do would break it if you were to mark it. The same or different product? You know, destroy the bottom three. So even if it's the same, that would break it. Offset it happen, makes you go again, so you can redo the bottom four feet, check this for that, not the whole place.
All right, makes sense, yep, yep, thank you.
Go back into stuff. Thank you for smiling on that.
If you were metal four feet and then that smart siding, the rest, you have.
The data, right, there's something. All right. Um, all right, June, downtown meeting results and follow-up action items. Hit us up on that, Joe.
Sure, uh, there's three, three items I want to touch on. One of them is donation article. You did not initiate, but it's one of the, right? There was the Fosse ATV club. It's a tie, one sixty-seven, one sixty-seven, so it'd be better to tie that, most fail. Quite clear that. Uh, a couple of the initiated articles, meaning the board put these together, uh, C one as everybody heard on, in the voting day, there's a typo at the printers. So instead of raising the intended four fifty-five, four fifty-five thousand, uh, the question raised appropriate four hundred five thousand, so it's fifty thousand dollar difference there. Um, as I recall, that would be, would be for the uh, capital reserve for engineering costs with the transfer station. You got a little bit of time to figure out. Um, uh, how you want to handle that. Probably in August, you could ask a question about using undersigned fund balance. They've been done by then, that's a safe way to handle that. Uh, and of course, EX eleven, which is police department uh, lost by ten or twelve votes, if I recall. So I do think the board should schedule, uh, at least one special meeting, plus two. Uh, you already have one scheduled, we'll clarify that. You have one scheduled for September ninth to go with conference plan. I need to add some, uh, safety. Um, I would recommend moving that back to August nineteenth. There's a timeline in your, your package for that. Uh, in order to uh, address the EX eleven question, I would also recommend that the board consider having an open town meeting next week uh, to take that question back up. Ask voters what their vote is within. The reason I say open town meeting, uh, is, is the timing of it, so. Um, typically you do your commitment first of July, Rogers and I have been talking, I said that, I said first meeting of July, that's where you set your bill rate, you set your taxes, your tax. Uh, with a, uh, a difference of just under six hundred thousand uh, dollars, meaning, you know, the EX eleven article failed, but the B, I think it's B eighteen article passed, so that gave the town, gives the board rather uh, the power to use three-twelfth of last year's adopted budget, which comes out to a hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars. That'll operate the PD till early end of August or so. But I think it's a good idea to get get ahead of it a little bit and ask that question of town meeting prior to if, if possible. So I recommend setting setting that meeting, an open town meeting format, and then rescheduling September ninth back on August eleventh.
Ask, ask a question.
Where it at?
Um, I didn't see on that, that, what did the, the, the straw poll you did, what did that come back?
Two to one for, uh, secret ballot roughly.
So then wouldn't that be in the voter's best interest, by secret ballot, because they voted two to one?
Would be, but for the timing to try to get it into the, uh, the year's commitment, makes more sense to do an open town. That's funny, we're on the opposite side of this, uh, this argument.
Oh, no, that was the thing. We, we all agreed that when we, we did the straw was the.
We didn't all agree.
Oh, I know. I know you don't agree on, so that's.
Exactly, well.
Yeah, so, so you're going to try to do that next week? There's no notice provision for that?
Trying to figure out right now, Chris.
I thought presumably you had to follow the rules.
So a notice period for, uh, an open town meeting is seven days.
Yeah.
I have a question. Can't you do a secret ballot at an open town meeting? Can't you have written ballots?
Plus. Yeah, you can do a written ballot, yes.
Yeah, we don't need it off the floor, right?
Um.
Joe, I think it might be important to, for people to realize why, why we need to do it soon, like, what, what's at stake?
Uh, well, again, one of the most important things is getting it done before commitment. I, it's one of the things that concerns me, and I'll be honest about it. We've got employees that made a life decision to come here, um, and, and I don't want to recommend, you know, that process taking longer than it needs to, to, for the community to determine, you know, the level they're going to fund the department at. Um, as far as I'm concerned, that's a pretty important thing. Um, and I think it's important for the board to uh, remind voters why, you know, the decision was made to make sure that we had a staff PD. I know that's important to you folks. So I think this is an opportunity to make sure that that message is, is heard. That, to me, that's very important. I'm sure it is to you too. Uh, commitment is also very important because you, you can push that out, but that's going to danger in pushing that out. The longer you push it out, the closer you get to tax bill times with town meeting, told you when they want that sent out, so. It's a balancing act. I think it's, this is important enough to, to face it. Do it like.
Etha, do you have something?
Um, thank you. I'm so sorry. So the the article B eighteen authorized the three twelfths for the twenty-five percent from the prior year's budget. And your concern is that you don't think if we push this out, generally when you get a no vote on a budget item, um, you go back and you revise the budget. You look at the budget again. It sounds like you're suggesting that we push for the same exact number in a week?
That is what I'm recommending to the board.
So there's no additional intent to engage voters and maybe try and figure out why? I mean, there was a forty percent on average across nearly all of your expense articles, there was an average of forty-one point five percent of voters who expressed concerns with proposed spending.
Mr. Chair, those those articles don't need to go back to town meeting. They passed.
Right.
Yeah, and I understand that. I'm very well aware of the process. But what I'm asking is generally when when you see a budget get voted down, the the management and everything kind of goes back and tries to revise that budget before presenting it again. You're, it sounds like you're suggesting we present it exactly like it went at a no vote the last time.
I don't know if you do that under the reciprocity. Remember, we we dealt with that before with a couple of the hearings that you can't have an exact vote on the exact same thing a second time if it's already been voted once. It's a pound of Oakland versus, I don't remember the case law, but I know your council knows it because we referenced it when we dealt with the marijuana referendum.
So it 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 is advisable. And and if I could explain the difference, I know there's pensive back and forth about open. It's a unique situation with the boards in. However, what can happen at an open meeting is um, an open deliberation about the budget amount. It is draft I'm gonna give you was worded exactly the way it was before, which means it would be a capped article. Uh, the reason it's different is the voters, the legislative body can identify a different number if they choose to do so. That's different than the the highest number. So it's it's, yes, it's the same question, but the mechanism allows the legislative body to approach differently if they decide to. Diana, oops, sorry.
Just, I I understand what you're saying there, but I I'm sitting back going, you want the voters to make a decision to vote something that might be even less than what you anticipate or need based upon, I I mean, not coming back with a number that makes sense or an adjustment or a reason for that opens it up for them to say, no, on everything, for zero. And and I would be very concerned. How about that scenario happening? Um, I think in I I'm all for uh, police department arrangement. I think we need it. We we have some good people working it. They're doing a great job. But I think there was a clear point made that people are upset about the scenario and the number. And in good faith, it would be great if we could see that there was something coming in there um, that was a, that was acceptable and workable for you all to be able to agree with. I think you're opening yourself for a real option of even worse than you think.
I don't think we're opening ourselves up for anything because Joe gave his recommendation. There's five people in this room in a line that haven't said we're going with the same number. Etha asked the question. Chris talked about it. You talked about it. And that's what Joe recommends. I didn't say that's what I want to do. I didn't hear a vote. I didn't hear us even discuss it.
And I didn't mean that that way.
I don't know. I just want to make that heard because I'd be more inclined to drop down to budget committee's recommended number because it was like the only thing that we disagreed on. Maybe two things that I'd be more inclined to do that. Uh, but I figured we would discuss that, but we haven't got a chance to discuss. We just got Joe's recommendation.
And I apologize. I don't have that in front of me. Maybe you do. What's the delta from the twenty-four budget to the twenty-five?
Twenty thirty-six.
Two hundred and thirty-six thousand.
Just to clarify, um, Joe, I'm wondering if that two thirty-six, Mr. Chairman, in it factors in the um, extra money that was approved in both in, um, or if this is a direct subtraction from last year's approved budget to to what's what was proposed.
Wants to know if you added that ninety, ninety-five or whatever into that.
Mr. Chair, the way the article is written, it would not incorporate uh, the extra ninety-five. Last year was the adopted budget. That's the word. It's in the approved budget from previous year. Or seventy.
So the delta is nineteen-six a month. So it'd be sixty grand in the whole if you went the regular process. Because the three months did it a public hearing. It is at the same time we did the conference.
I don't believe, no, I know. I I think we can operate till the end of August or so, a hundred and eighteen thousand. So there's a timeframe in the article, B eighteen is July one. Three twelfths of last year's budget doesn't guarantee that you have enough money on those three months. So one of the things uh, I just feel like I should bring up is there's a collective bargaining agreement. Uh, and the new rates of that, of all of the can't use their rates from last year. It's against law. If that bad faith, you have that part. So so that changes how far that loan is gonna go in a year.
So your only solution would be a reduction for the collective bargain, right? I'm I'm just saying, I'm not proposing. I'm not saying you're proposing. I'm just saying from the collective bargaining agreement, at least my recommendation, maybe school law is different than municipal law, but what happens is if you don't have enough funding, then you have to eliminate a position which you're allowed to do on the collective bargain. I'm not saying we're doing that. I'm just saying, just trying to understand the the procedure and the part of that. You don't have the funding, then you have to turn back or do something there until you get the funding approved, which then, once the new gets approved, it's retroactive back to July one, correct?
Most likely.
So you fill back up your copy.
Larry?
You, you know, any of us ever thought, you might see one article holding down and whatever. What to do when that does happen. But we have want to have now another public hearing, everybody say with the numbers, particularly to the numbers. Public hearing, either to reach the same or much significant or greater number to go back to the voters because the voters have spoken. For some reason that I don't have, it's either not big enough budget or it's too small.
And some misinformation. Some people thought that they had all of last year's budget this year.
I bet you didn't receive that was true.
True, but if you'd have seen the signs online and then the out on the streets that said use last year's budget. You know what I'm saying? So there was some this.
I thought anybody, everyone had known that we think we need to look at this. That's the beauty of it. And have both budget committee just like the end of decide what we want to spend for this. We should go to a meeting with our hands raised at both departments, he will.
You can.
All it takes is a is a walk down Main Street, a trip to the frost. That's what we do it.
You're right. And I mean, you can look at the other side of it, you know, you it was ten votes that would give a difference, you know, so you have
You give it to one vote.
You were, you a hundred percent, one vote is all it takes. But I'm saying there's roughly that many people that are supporting it that are that voted against it is what I'm saying. And you only got about a quarter of the people that are in the town vote. I'm just just throwing it all out there.
Old-fashioned town meeting, you know, with the people that are
Oh, I know. I remember the days.
Got the gusto of it.
Yeah.
You know, and I know. Normal in a no. Someone of some sort of personality stood up and asked for an amendment if it applies. So you're top. You know, you stood up, gave yourself and said, I don't think we should buy a truck this year. And this is why I made my job. Listen to you. For whatever reason.
Frenchies of the day and that's right.
Skiing out what I always got. When you presented this case. So I'd just be afraid that you careful how we do this. I understand that if it flumps, it flumps, goes back to the two-third deal, whatever the recall. Like, you gotta hurry up and get your ass in gear and come up with a solution. Coming back with the same number, if you get voted down, what's what's on the roster then?
You have the, you have the ability for a special town meeting on August nineteenth.
Yeah, but you're running gas, August thirtieth, he says.
That's right. You you got you got the finish line, right? Oh, I know. I know.
I think we are. Look at it very line by line, dollar by dollar, see what the people want. I don't think it was a big help that we had a budget in two thousand twenty-four. That did not help the war. You need to make sure I'm agreeing twenty-three or four. On people's throat.
Well, fifty-five percent of that was due to the but to the contract. So, no, I just I just throwing, I'll throw the details out there because it's very important to have the facts out there.
This is the same information.
Yep. About Keith. Talk about it. Keith, you got anything?
Uh, after listening to all the deliberation, I mean, my only thought in this whole thing is you can speculate numbers all day long, but until you get down to the root of what people want, you're never gonna know what the number is. So I understand you have to sub, you have to submit a number and then have that open town meeting or or a vote on it, but until you do what what Larry just said, essentially, deep dive into that budget and understand what that majority in this case don't just don't agree with, we're not gonna understand where they want to be. That's gonna be the biggest thing is we can agree on a number, the five of us, the ten of us, or whatever it is, the budget committee and us can come together and you know, have a an average, but until we get to what those voters really want to see represented, we're having a conversation about the same thing over and over again.
What do we need to set a date for? We're gonna need for the budget committee.
Start with budget fee. You would think that that starts with the budget.
All of us.
It's ours. Where could the number come in? We don't know. The number is roughly ten dollars. Presented. What happens if it gets rejected?
I mean, those, yeah, what happens, what happens, what happens. But if we're gonna have a meeting to to figure this out, budget committee, I would expect for the police chief to be there. Uh, what this in in my mind, not mathematically, what it comes down to is whether you think you need a cop at three in the morning if someone's breaking into your house or you don't. That's what the extra cost is. A full police department, somebody available all the time. Some people don't give a whether they're gonna have it or not, till they need one. So that's basically what it comes down to, Larry, is that that's where a large part of the extra cost is. It is, is the the fourth officer having someone that's gonna come to your house in the middle of the night or after midnight or five o'clock in the morning when you, your kids need it. And that that's what, that's what we're voting on, more or less. I don't know if everybody knows that.
I mean, I don't know why they all voted that. I mean, they, it was a combination was the increase three to twelve thousand and a hundred and seventy-five here. But I went through all the bounds, but that's what we're caught managing.
Well, something that we've been looking at for two years, around twenty-four seven. Even when French and Jared were here. No, I'm just, I'm just going back two years and then they left.
And then look how far along we went with no disbarment. Obviously, we couldn't find personnel. But I understand your board position. You sit there looking, well, you got a guy. I'll give you this. I'll do this. I promise you this. I promise you that. In all costs, when you couldn't find anyone.
We're lucky enough to have
Right, you guys, twelve long, thirty committees. And go and find him. Get back out. Oh, world's gonna worry about that. Get back out.
Great.
So open town, Mr. Chair, open town meeting. Also, I think of this earlier. Kind of touched on. It also gives the the voters to come to that meeting opportunity to vote on budget committee's recommendation. Just different than the format for this secret ballot where they just vote on yes or no. That's something they want to vote. They have been more inclined to vote.
Only take this month, I'm gonna be gone or the next the end of this week, and then I won't be here.
Thirtieth or the twenty-seventh?
Thirty is the one. Twenty is Friday or or Monday. Twenty-seven or thirty. Other than that, I can make something happen.
And I won't be here at the twenty-fifth through the
Don't you have some leaving time for days wise to get out to post this and do this?
I mean, to have a meeting with the budget committee. Oh, that's what I'm talking about.
Monday, well, twenty-third. Next week.
I'll be back Saturday. Yep.
Twenty-third.
Keith, you around on the twenty-third, Monday?
I can be.
How about the budget committee?
Yeah.
That's the budget.
We got some members here. You guys.
Monday or Tuesday. So, I mean, right?
On this grid.
They sure mean I'll be in Alaska.
Be there.
Okay. I mean, do we have lotion?
Is there a desire to to still schedule the open town meeting or is this is this in preparation of the open town meeting or?
If we, if, so so work it with me here. If we meet with the budget meeting and input seven day posting period for an open town meeting, we just missed the commitment deadline. What we would be pushing out now is what we're looking at.
July seventh. This workshop that we had scheduled in for commitment. Um, there is some flexibility there. You can put that to the twenty-first, a little later than I'd like to do it, but
So you got a little
It has to be pretty good process.
That's right.
All right. We'll shoot from Monday the twenty-third and then I'm sorry, five o'clock. Yeah, five o'clock's fine.
It's not open meeting, just for
And then after that, we can set a date for
In July.
July.
Excuse me. What what time would you like to set that for on the twenty-third?
Twenty-third at five, Tracy.
Five. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to get a special town meeting now or you want to wait till the twenty-third?
You need seven days.
Seven days.
Well, and I don't think next week is gonna work. Right?
We do, we're meeting on the twenty-third. We could, we could set it for the first of July still. You're gonna be here first.
Exactly. Oh, you? Yeah.
You're gonna pack that out.
Think we are. Keith, you gonna be around on the first?
I can be.
Okay. Well, it's a bed free to afford that.
Can I zoom in?
Oh, you're gonna be on the first, on the twenty-third or the first?
Uh, the first. I'm gone.
I'll be back.
I'm gone from a a week from the twenty-fifth to the to the second. I can be back for the, the third is the third, so.
I know. I can do it that night. Do it during
Yeah, everybody will be there.
Back on the first.
I'll be back, yeah, bright and early.
So if it's gonna, Mr. Chair, it's gonna be seven days beyond the twenty-third. If it was in preference to have the open town meetings, I would guide you to meeting the the requirements proposed there.
Yeah, set it on the twenty, set it on the twenty-third.
That'll be on your agenda.
Wanna go.
Well, we'll figure it out. Twenty-thirds, we got four of you guys here. Twenty thirds, we got four of you guys here, so nobody here. All right.
Yeah, four.
Are there particular things you would like the board would like staff and the budget committee to have prepared for you?
Uh, Rich will be here for that meeting.
And Mark can be with us too. Mark's in the audience tonight.
Okay.
He's available all of by him to. What if there's anything in particular that we can work through for you? Let us know, uh, we can try to make that, uh, you have a judicious use of our time and making an expedient meeting to the extent that we can. Try to rush it, I'm just trying to say, we'll do more of a map for you.
Very cool.
Larry, I'm really concerned if you ranch this thing through to us. And you don't inform the tax payers of all the things, and maybe they can all make it on the first of July or on the twenty seventh, twenty third. This is such a major sit, issue for the town. Take a month, that chimerat, look at your police force, look at your budget, look at your thing, you do not want to go to a public town meeting, you can zero. That could happen.
It could. Yep.
So I just, please ask you to think and work with the all on a new budget and the police chief, the town manager before you go your way up.
We're gonna wait to we got a week to, to deep dive it before we get to the twenty third.
You gotta inform the people before that public town meeting, where you're gonna take one person, like Chris, stand up, sway the little crowd. We don't like it.
Come on, I, I, trust me, I know, been there, seen it, yeah.
You guys went to the, this forum of this silent town meeting.
We did.
And we, this could come up for several years to come now. This would have been fixed on the floor, convention. You don't think we need four hours, all right, got it, hundred and sixty three thousand dollars, let's go. Well, unfortunately, now you're gonna zero the field.
It's a possibility, and it's possibility that passes, I mean, you, you don't know.
That's what I'm just saying, I don't think. Education department. Because you could lose.
Well, like I said, we got a week to get to the twenty third and, and figure out what I did, I said we have a week to get to the twenty third, and we have some time to figure out one, we're gonna set the, the town meeting, so.
I thought you said June.
No, 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 I said we, we thought about that, but then Sam said she wasn't gonna be here, so. No, I value your opinion, that's fine, that's, thank you.
Is the board still interested in rescheduling the September ninth meeting to August?
That was my next.
That's still advisable as far as I'm.
Yeah, I'd bring that back to the nineteenth then.
No, that's fine, if it works, the time.
You want a motion for that, uh, set it for the nineteenth of August.
It says the lighting is on there.
Yep.
The ordinance committee isn't done with the lighting piece. I just don't know if we're pushing ours, pushing them up to a deadline. The signs already went to attorney review and everything, but we haven't done the lighting piece yet. We're still working on that.
Yeah, we have to have a workshop with you.
Yeah, there's workshops and everything that still have to happen with the lighting piece. I just wanted to point that out.
I'm not disagreeing with the nineteenth, I just, no, we need to meet with the ordinance committee on the.
No.
On the nineteenth, we've been valid.
The motion from Ethan.
Second.
Second from Sam. All in favor? All right, so move. All right, go for all of that. Uh, correspondence, nothing to be written or written down in the calendar.
Uh, I, we put some items in italics here because I was contemplating the fact that you might do what you just did, uh, but downbeat fast, so these dates are no longer that, most of them, anything, I'll be back. Um, except the June eighteenth CRC meeting, which is two days from tonight, uh, tonight, it's gonna happen at the school, so that's where we'll talk about the comprehensive plan. Um, that is concurrently at the state of me for review at the moment. You have a couple things to add on, you can, like, end it, at least one. Um, I heard from Franklin Savings today, they reach out periodically when our C docs are going to expire. They did Friday. We're currently getting a three point eight rate, three point eight percent rate, thirteen weeks. They're asking for monitoring you, it expires next Wednesday, I think. Uh, so I asked what the ICS rate is, and it's three point nine three, so I see that's your checking keep accounts. So if that rate is higher than three point eight, uh, I would recommend this not just to let let it run out, not keep an eye on that rate, and starts to go towards three point eight, benefits to the, the, it was blocking that very time, so we can just more flexible. That's our date there. Uh, one other thing that I want to take to tell you, uh, year end is June thirty, so the front office is, it's some of our staff's first time, so we're gonna trio and so forth, so we're gonna close by day, probably around here that day, uh, we'll host it everywhere. Give a little bit of time to give that process the first time.
Great sheet there. Yes, that's it, anybody get any of these communicate files?
Just wanted to mention one thing. Uh, everyone should have gotten in their mailbox today and went out by rural route today, the information that Keith submitted to you. Kelly O'Neil came through us, white graphics. Half the cost would have been if we fixed it out of Portland.
Well, they look good.
Great, and we did it under the thousand dollar budget there, so. So every, every person who has a book office box, room, it's world, it's greatly, the crossing got the flyer for, it's a four page, it opens up in a four. Hoping that I don't, lets people to show up and. Wendy, Wendy did a great job with that.
People see it immediately when you pull it out of the box.
And it's, and it's readable.
I didn't see a lot, then I cried and I walked through, so that was, to me, that was a win.
All right, that's it. Been a motion adjourned.
We moved.
By, the second by Sam, Keith, thank you.
Thanks, Keith.